Regular meeting. With that, I'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Hatfield, please call and roll.
Mr. Barnes?
Here.
Mrs. Feasel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Thank you.
Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written. We have no changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
So moved. I'll second.
Any discussion on the agenda? All right, Ms. Hatfield, please call and roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, the next agenda item is our presentation for this evening, the Community Service Awards, recognizing members of the community that have gone above and beyond what's expected and our opportunity to recognize their contribution to the district. So we appreciate you coming tonight. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Patrick to read the script.
I'm going to announce the names of the winners. And when you're called, would you please come forward to accept your award and have your photo taken with Superintendent Mark Rafe and Board President Kevin O'Brien?
There's that.
And then we'd like to do a group picture of all of our outstanding Community Service Award winners. So would you please stick around and have your picture taken? I will be out in the common area.
In the lobby?
In the lobby, okay.
Do you want it?
(Inaudible).
First, we have Shelley Frederick from Oak Creek Elementary. Is she here? Audrey Beacom, nominated by Heritage Beckham.
(Inaudible).
Which one is it?
It's Beacom.
Beacom, so I was right the first time. Audrey has been an active volunteer at Heritage Elementary for nine years. She has dedicated countless hours volunteering in classrooms and to the PTO. She has served as an officer and chaired many of the PTO events throughout her time at Heritage. And for the past several years, she has been the chairperson of the book fairs, which has been more successful than years past. Thank you, Audrey, for your performance.[171.12][171.12](Applause). Next, we have Kristin Mila Vinaski from Shanahan Middle School.
That's me.
Oh, did I say it so bad you didn't recognize your name?[188.31][188.31](Laughter).
(Inaudible) I have a zipper malfunction.[193.26][193.26](Laughter). I look like a hula.
Well, besides having a broken zipper, Kristin spearheaded the business partnership between Abbott Nutrition and Shanahan's STEM team for the last four years. She's worked tirelessly to coordinate funding and an army of engineering volunteers who bring real-world connections and STEM experiences to the students. Kristin has worked closely with the STEM team on monthly hands-on labs and is working hard to bring her Abbott team members to other schools within the district. So thank you.
Thank you.[238.56][238.56](Applause).
Allison Miller, nominated by Walnut Creek Elementary. Allison has been one of the most dedicated volunteers that Walnut Creek has ever had. She's served in many capacities through the PTO, including president. Most recently, she's volunteered as co-chair for the silent auction during the carnival, and her fundraising abilities have gone far beyond what they have ever seen before.[267.72][267.72](Applause). Thank you, Allison. Next, we have Jen Nisley, also from Nysley.
Nysley.
Come on up, Jen.[283.77][283.77](Applause). Jen is an outstanding volunteer who puts her heart and soul into everything she does. She's co-chaired and organized the silent auction for the carnival for the past several years. The amount of money raised by the silent auction has funded the majority of the special programming for students at Walnut Creek. In addition, the funds have been used to purchase technology to keep the students on the cutting edge. Jen approaches everything she does with excitement and a smile on her face. Her passion for supporting the school is commendable, and she goes above and beyond for Walnut Creek. Thank you.[324.13][324.13](Applause). Please welcome Heather Breen, nominated by Olentangie High School.
Yay.[333.16][333.16](Applause).
Heather has been an active participant within the Olentangie Athletic Boosters for the past 14 years, and she's served as sports rep for the field hockey, bowling, and softball teams. Heather has served on the executive board itself, co-chaired the booster drive, the 50/50 coordinator for Friday Night Football as well. She volunteers on Friday night and serves as the indoor concession stand manager. You guys work together, huh?
She sells my popcorn.[366.03][366.03](Laughter).
She served for the last six years, and to say she has went above and beyond the call of duty is quite an understatement. Thank you, Heather.[377.63][377.63](Applause). For Oak Creek is Kristy Takas here tonight. First, Scioto Ridge, they've nominated Kim McCarron.[392.31][392.31](Applause). This is her first year serving as PTO president at Scioto Ridge, and she's brought a ton of new ideas to the PTO. She's not only held very successful fundraisers, but she has created new family fun experiences and brought to bring to the students and the parents of the school. Kim has worked hard and always put the kids first in every decision activity. They are very grateful to have you at Scioto Ridge.[422.63][422.63](Applause). Olentangie Administration and Pupil Services has nominated Vicki Sheer. She serves on a policy committee.
Oh, yeah.
And she's a translator for our district. Alum Creek has nominated Don Dennis. It's Don.[444.47][444.47](Applause). Don supports the district in a variety of ways, as a Boy Scout leader, a baseball coach, and a school volunteer. Time is precious, and Don spends a lot of it helping develop the young students of Alum Creek into model citizens. And he also generously provides his professional expertise all through the district in the area of audiovisual systems, including providing upgrades to the sound system at Alum Creek Commons. Thank you, Don.
Thanks.[478.22][478.22](Applause).
Olentangie Administration would like to recognize Pam Bachman.
Oh, Pam.[486.13][486.13](Applause).
Pam's love of Olentangie did not end with her retirement from the district. She serves as the president of the Olentangie Education Foundation to raise money to enhance academic excellence in our school district. And OEF is thriving under her leadership, and she has planned a new event called Zulentangie. So check out the OEF website for the August event. It's Zulentangie.
It's gonna be the social event of the year.
I already bought my tickets today.
Okay, good. I haven't gotten mine yet.
Get yours tomorrow.
I will.[521.32][521.32](Laughter).
Olentangie Liberty High School would like to recognize Gary Ross.[525.79][525.79](Applause). Gary has spent the last 15 years volunteering, a tremendous amount of time in athletic programming at Liberty High School. He has served in various capacities, such as game operations, event management, statistician, and most importantly, the voice of the Patriots Track and Field Team. During his time at Liberty, Mr. Ross has also helped with fundraising projects and partnering with the Liberty Athletic Department in many of its activities. He's very hardworking, patient, passionate, and always willing to help. They appreciate you very much.[562.29][562.29](Applause). From Berkshire Middle School, we have Wendy Ellis. Is Wendy here?
Yay.[573.41][573.41](Applause).
Wendy has been an integral part of making Berkshire a wonderful place for students.
She serves on PTO both at Johnny Cakes and Berkshire, as well as always participating in activities in the building and outside of her PTO responsibilities. Thank you, Wendy.[596.79][596.79](Applause). Berkshire Middle School also nominated Brooke Sabladil. Is she here?
She couldn't make it. Her son had a baseball.
Okay, well, we understand. We appreciate her. Olentangie High School would like to nominate or recognize Robbie Rickert.[618.72][618.72](Applause). Robbie has gone above and beyond to help the community and schools with generous donations from his business, and he has been very generous in the athletic programs with his sports donations. Thank you, Robbie.[637.61][637.61](Applause). If you would like to, you're welcome to stay, but would you please go get your picture taken in the lobby?[652.04][652.04](Laughter). We love the crowd, though.
(Inaudible).
It's hot in here tonight.
I know.
It's hot.
Yeah.
It's muggy. Where's Mr. Gordon? We need him to fix this.
Shut the AC off.
Aren't you hot, Julie? It's hot in here.
Yeah.
They did tell me that they made sure that AC was on.
It may get cooler now that all the people are there.
Yeah, really. There's nobody here. Where's all the Rebels?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Once again, all blow and no go.
Mallory Stuxton.
You were all set to fight.
I was ready.
Did you like the shirt? I'm like, oh.
Yeah.
All right, the next agenda item is the Board President's Report. There's two things I want to cover. First is, I think we all had the opportunity over the weekend to attend graduation.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so we had three graduations. I had the opportunity over the last three days to go to the sixth grade celebration in Orange, the seventh grade celebration in Orange. It's been fantastic to see all the accomplishments of the students. I think this is a message that was echoed in Mark's, Mr. Rafe's superintendent's message. Today is, we can't let the actions of a few overshadow the accomplishments of many because I think we've had a fantastic year. Admittedly, we've had some issues recently, which will be addressed swiftly and appropriately. But we've had a great year of student achievement, athletic achievement, that can't be overshadowed. So with that, I want to make sure that the staff and the administration feel that it was a very successful year, and we will get through these last few items, and we'll move on and continue to be successful in the district. Second, it's an opportunity for us to recognize one of our members at the table here. It's Emily's 10th year of employment at Olentangie Schools.
Oh, my God.
So with that, we've got a small gift for Emily to recognize her significant contribution.
Wow, it's not a watch.
(Applause).
It could be a pocket.
As I, as I, I texted Emily at the end of our last meeting where she presented the five-year forecast, and I said, "It's nice to see that flourish here isn't just for students. It's for the administration, it's for our staff." And we've really had the opportunity to see Emily flourish in her role as treasurer. So with that, we say thank you and recognize her 10 years of service.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Rafe for the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Congratulations to Emily, 10 years. I just, as we say sometimes, it's their dog years, though.[846.13][846.13](Laughter). So, and I also thank you, Mr. O'Brien, for those kind words about the accomplishments because I do feel that we all heartily that the accomplishments of the many are far away from the poor choices of the few. So with that, our, no, it's on this time. Yeah. Really? Yeah. (Inaudible). All right, so, after that, gotta keep pressing buttons a little bit more.
It's probably because you turned it off in the trip.
So, as we always start with our living our mission slides, as Mr. O'Brien said, it was great graduation, 1,556 students graduate, the largest class in school history. That's a picture of Liberty's kids taking their final selfie, which has become one of their traditions. Since you guys divided up the duties of shaking hands throughout the day, Emily and I got to shake every one of the 1,500.
Yes.[921.82][921.82](Laughter).
By the time I got to the last kids in Orange, I was kind of doing two fingers.[925.01][925.01](Laughter). With the classes pushing 1,700 the next two years, maybe moving to fist bumps.[931.32][931.32](Laughter). Yeah. I've not been to a Pioneer Day in years, but I've got to get them. Got to put it on the calendar and make a little field trip, and I'm not going to wear a Pioneer Day outfit, but I just want to go and see our kids. That's one of those great Olentangie traditions. All of our third graders go to Liberty Presbyterian and celebrate Pioneer Day, give the students an opportunity to experience what life was like before video games and cell phones and, you know, all the crazy technology we deal with. But it is truly a fun step back in time, and I'm just so proud that this is one of the things that we continue to do year over year, and kids really look forward to it. Virtually every graduation I've been to, you still hear the kids talking, as they reminisce, talking about Pioneer Days. So, three students from central Ohio were named Congressional Art Competition winners. One of those kids was Matthew Brady from Orange High School, and this is his photo called Luke. And it's pretty impressive that it'll be on display in the U.S. Capitol for the entire next school year. So congratulations to Matthew Brady. Again, just another example of our total academic program, going from, you know, the end game of graduation, you know, through all the athletics and the arts and even things like, you know, the Pioneer Day are part of that total program that we offer our kids to find their passion and flourish. Got it. Hopefully, you saw the announcement. We had more schools designated as Purple Star Schools. Oak Creek, Heritage, Cheshire, and Berlin were recently added to the list. So now we have all the high schools, all the middle schools, and five elementaries. And I think it'll continue to go, you know, through our elementary ranks. They all do activities to show they're military-friendly. And with that, because I think of our involvement in that, our Keynotes had the opportunity to participate in the annual Gold Star Families Reef Laying Ceremony. Every year, the governor recognizes Gold Star Families. Those are families that have lost a family member to military combat. Keynotes performed the National Anthem and two additional songs. It just was, they just did incredible. Just a fabulous job by them, and we're honored to be a part of that. Quick couple of agenda items up there. Student handbooks coming up here this year. I think, you know, Mr. Fede's going to highlight that. Randy's got the athletic handbooks. Also part of student handbooks are fees. We are approving a contract, recommending the approval of a contract with CT Consultants to do our survey work. There's actually two items for CT. One is for as a surveyor of record and then the contract to perform those services. We need to get surveys on all of our current property and then potentially any other property we might be looking at as we move forward with planning future buildings. And then finally, there's one technology purchase. Those are for additional technology at Berlin High School. With that, I'll take any questions.
Technology. It said some type of board. Are those like smart boards for the front of the room?
The V-Sonic displays?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that what that is?
They're touchscreen TVs. So they're not like, they're not the smart boards anymore, moved away from that, but they're all totally interactive and...
Smart boards are kind of going away, is that fair?
Yeah. Over time, and these are just, you know, they're better, there's better technology that continues. And again, as we continue to do that, we'll trade those out as we move forward. And then finally, anxiously, everybody I'm sure will be waiting, the report cards will become available May 29th. Our Summer Enrichment Program, the C Program, begins June 3rd, and then we have our next board meeting on June 13th, and that one will be at Olentangie. Are we here?
We'll be here.
Here, okay. And we'll do the spring recognitions here. Okay.
Mr. Anthony, first try.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is the treasure report. Ms. Hatfield?
Yes, we have several items on the agenda, which is a little unusual for our department to have that many at once. So I'll give you a brief description of those, as well as the presentations that are coming to you tonight in a financial manner. We have North Gate TIF and NCA proposal, and that TIF proposal, an NCA, or New Community Authority is what it stands for, is a proposal to talk about public improvements along the I-71 and 36, 37 routes in Sunbury, Ohio. We have Tommy Hatfield and team here tonight that will get more into the details of that, but will take questions after their presentation if you have them. We also have a second reading of our May five-year forecast update, and we'll ask the board for their approval on that item tonight. To support that, we have our general fund budget that will, that supports the five-year forecast in the detail. Those object levels that are on that general fund budget roll up into the major expenditure components that are reported in the five-year forecast, so it ties out to that, but gives you some more information about where and what types of expenditures fall under, for example, purchase services and supplies and materials, et cetera. We also have our annual approval of the Meta contract for the community's purpose. Just a reminder that Meta is a service provider for information technology services related to not only just our student information systems, but they also support a progress book, Infinite Campus, EMIS support, and IEP Anywhere, which helps our special education population. And then they also help with internet content filtering. So they provide us with a multitude of services for that contract. We also have our April board financials that are in front of you for approval tonight. And those financials have been rolled into the five-year forecast. The only thing of note that I would like to point out is the difference in the revenue over expectation versus where we discussed that for the five-year forecast update. On the April financials, it shows that we are about $17 million ahead in revenue. Nine of that is just to the timing of the homestead and rollback payments, and then the remaining $8 million is, of course, the items that we identified when we did the five-year forecast presentation. So no changes to the forecast coming from this reading or the financial actuals that have been added to that. Then we wrap up with our amended appropriations, which are just budget adjustments to make sure that we're following Ohio Revised Code. Our board meeting minutes from the April 11th meeting, again, to comply with Ohio Revised Code, to have your approval on those. And then we have donations. As always, we're grateful for the support of our community that they give to us in not only volunteer hours but in-kind donations. So tonight, we'll recognize a $500 donation to Berlin High School Vocal Music from Laura and Pete Zimmerman, a $500 donation to Berlin High School Vocal Music again, but from Sandra Thrasher and Alicia Ryan, and then iPads valued at $329 each to Olentangie Berlin Football from the Berlin Athletic Boosters. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have about the financials or anything that we have for approval tonight.
Good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hatfield. Do we have any items for public participation?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, we'll move to discussion items. The first discussion item is the North Gate TIF. I want to ask Joe Long from Long EDA, Emmett Kelly, Todd Frost, Tommy Hatfield, and Pat Shidley, please come forward. Paul is beginning to run.
Ross Brown, Todd, that's the long.
Thank you. My name's Tommy Hatfield. I'm with the Village of Sunbury. I'm mayor of Sunbury, and I just want to first thank the board, thank Superintendent Rafe, and Emily, congratulations on 10 years. When I'm here tonight, you know, it's sitting here watching these awards, what we're going to talk about is not nearly as fun because what you all do is about the kids and about what I've sat here and witnessed tonight. And the last thing I'll say about that is 1,500 children. I mean, oh, my gosh. That's amazing, and I think congratulations to you all for doing that because that's what this is all about. This evening, we're here to talk about what was described as an NCA or a New Community Authority. The Village of Sunbury has actually done some annexation, which brings us out to 71 and into the Olentangie School District. The purpose of this was, I'd like to think in the same vein that you all have, and that is infrastructure and improving what, I guess, quality of life of what we have within our community. And as part of that, it's access to roadways and be able to get to work, and, you know, people love living here, but they don't all get to work here. This evening, we're talking about a proposal that is going to help fund an interchange at 71, which would also include Sunbury Parkway, which would extend from 36, 37 at Africa Road and come into the Village of Sunbury. This is obviously a very important piece of infrastructure with the new Berlin Business Park and a lot of commuter traffic and infrastructure that's important to, or I believe is important to the Olentangie School District. This NCA is really kind of the first of its kind. We're really trying to partner with the community where we need to raise the money to fund this infrastructure, but at the same token, provide a payback to the school for that. And so hopefully, you all have been able to see what that agreement looks like, but I'm going to try and be very brief. I mean, ultimately, that's what we're trying to do. It's about a $160 million project from Sunbury to Africa Road at 36, 37. The east-west connector is committed roadway improvement that would be completed within about a year after the completion of the initial new exit, which would be just south of 36, 37, about where the weigh station used to be. This has been honestly about better than eight years in the making. Something I'm sure you've heard about before. It's taken a lot of partnership with the state, the county, and the local communities like Big Walnut and Olentangie. I'm going to let the rest of the team describe that to you a little bit further, and again, I think our role this evening is just to answer any questions that you may have. It's a very exciting opportunity, I think, and again, it's a one-of-a-kind, you know, situation. We understand that when you put 1,500 kids through a graduating class, that takes a lot of tax dollars, and we're trying to do the best we can to, you know, not overlap and spend that money wisely. And so this is, we really hope that this NCA and this, the target is really going to provide a commercial improvement to the area, which is really what we're all looking for. I know, you know, in Sunbury as well as Olentangie, we're looking to improve that tax base that doesn't necessarily burden the residents, but puts that on the area that's expanding and coming new to the community. So that's our goal. We really look forward to the partnership with you all and look forward, you know, hopefully if there's any questions, then we can move forward with it. But I'll go ahead and pass this on to Abree Joe, and we'll go from there. So if you have any questions, thank you.
Pat Shidley from North Gate Center Development. Emily, how do I just hit it once?
Yep.
So, I just wanted to get up and give a little bit of an illustration of the North Gate community area. As you can see, everything in red is basically in the North Gate community area. I-71 is, and I don't have a pointer. Oh, here it is. Well, it doesn't move, it doesn't go in the...
It absorbs here, you need to go over the paper.
Okay. So up here is the existing 36, 37 interchange. The approved interchange is right around 3800 feet to the south. Everything in red you see is in our New Community Authority as we speak. 71 splits the two school districts, Big Walnut on the right, Olentangie on the left. left. What we'd advise the new community authority to do is basically, like the mayor has stated, was to provide the opportunity for the school districts to reap, not only the school districts, but all the other government agencies, like the vocational schools, the library, things like that, get a percentage of the, of that TIF going forward and of our NCA charges as we move forward to help offset the 20/75% TIF. As the mayor indicated, the whole project from Africa Road all the way into the Village of Sunbury with about six phases over 15 years is $160 million. The initial phase is basically the interchange, the on-and-off ramp connectivity to Wilson Road. That's $53 million. And then the next phase going, which is Phase B, is basically right around $18 to $20 million. Within ODOT's budget, this has been up in front of their, their board to be able to provide funds. And they've allocated $10 million, $30, to Phase A, $30 million over the full project. And what we're trying to do is basically get this moving forward. We anticipate being able to start the interchange sometime in summer of 2021, or 2020 with it opening in 2021. So what I'll do is, if you have any questions in regards to area.
The west is up there. That's Four Winds.
This is Four Winds. This is the outlet mall as we speak today.
Yeah, then Four Winds is on the other side of the 71.
I'm sorry, right here, Four Winds.
So that's where the Cracker Barrel is?
Yeah.
Yes.
It'll come all the way down. It'll come down and connect to that Sunbury Parkway.
And what's in the purple?
The purple is area that's in the township opposed to being into the new community authority. So as we speak, that area is not in the new community authority or the Village of Sunbury.
So how far west now does the Village of Sunbury go?
All the way to the red. So the village comes all the way to South Galena. These parcels have been annexed into the village, and they're under their zoning regulations.
So the purples.
Is it Berkshire Township?
Berkshire Township. This is Berlin Township. So three Bs and a K basically separates. Berkshire Township is on the east side. On the west side, you would have Berlin Township.
Are you going to talk about the millage in the NCA?
I'm going to let Joe talk about the millage in the NCA.
Are you going to expand three Bs and a K? Is it going to get, go wider than, bigger than it is already?
The way it's planned right now is that three Bs and a K, and again, this is from the county and ODOT, three Bs and a K will become either a right-in, right-out, or no-access at 36, 37. There'll be a connection road that comes to Four Winds, but because of the offset of Four Winds and three Bs and a K, ODOT and the county have decided that that would basically be eliminated over time. So eventually, what will happen is, is this road comes through, you can see it, three Bs and a K is realigned right through here to connect to Four Winds to go forward. So they kind of tried to offset all this traffic off of three Bs and a K and bring it up to the Sunbury Parkway.
And then there's a light at Four Winds, right?
There is.
Because there's no light at three Bs and a K.
That's correct. And that'll stay.
Yeah.
And one of the things that ODOT has talked over time is, is that, you know, there's curb cuts and another traffic light just east, or just west of, I think, at the, or at the McDonald's.
McDonald's.
They're talking about possibly eliminating that to make it more of a fluid movement. Just a little history of why the interchange is to the south and not to the north. 66% of the traffic that gets off at 36, 37 today.
Oh, yeah.
Comes from the south and goes to the south. So the whole idea was, is to try to continue this flow. And the village and ODOT and the developer have agreed that this is going to be a limited access highway. So there won't be a lot of traffic lights. I think there's allowed at one or, one maybe, if not two, between Africa Road and the new interchange. Similar going to the east to try to keep that flow of traffic, not like it is up on Polaris, you know, and up by Cleveland Avenue. It's been a process for, like the mayor said, over eight years, plenty of traffic studies, plenty of people participating in the contribution. It's a tremendous contribution. You know, again, this whole area, what we've described is it will be purely commercial. We don't anticipate any residential other than possibly multifamily, but mostly it'll be office and offices and retail. We still want to plan to do a recreation area here to the south with turf fields to basically do a destination location for, and to also let the school districts be able to use that as well. Any other questions for me?
Any other questions?
No.
So I'll turn it over to Joe and let him talk about the millages.
Hi, I'm Joe Long. I'm going to scroll over a few details of the proposed TIF and the NCA. I should move to the slides. Okay, there we go. So for the proposed TIF, these would be what's called rolling parcel TIFs. And all that means is for any piece of development that occurs, the land will be parceled off, and that'll be its own separate TIF. And that will happen for each kind of piece of development. Instead of having the whole NCA area be one TIF, and as soon as one building gets developed, the TIF clock starts ticking for everything. We want to avoid that and have each piece of development have its own TIF. And that's only for parcels within the Northgate NCA area. We're proposing, you know, the TIF will be 20 years and 75%, with the schools receiving 25% of its normal share of the TIF revenues. But to counteract that, we also proposing that the schools will receive a portion of the NCA charges, which is the next slide. Oh, cut off a little bit. So for retail and office, the schools will get two and a half mils. Apartments would be seven for any auto dealer that gets developed on Olentangie side of the NCA, be five and a half mils. And then townhomes and single family would be four mils each. And then to give you kind of a better idea of kind of what all those numbers would mean, for a concrete example, we put this together, which assumes on the west side, if there's 80,000 square feet of office built, 250,000 square feet of retail, and then 400 apartments, what the schools would. Get, and I do want to point out that all of these numbers assume that for 20 years, there is no increase in market value. I'm also trying to be a little conservative. So as you can see, where's the, there we go, over there. So this shows on an annual basis what the school revenue would be for the whole 20 years. And I guess this also assumes that all of this gets developed at the same time, just to make this example simple. So right now, I went to the county auditor's website just to see what the schools currently receive on that property and its agriculture. So it's CAUV. And as you can see, it's about $1,700 a year. So if nothing happens the next 20 years, that would be about, you know, a little over $30,000 for the schools. And then on the right of that vertical line, we projected what the annual TIF revenue would be for the schools, along with the NCA revenue. And so we are showing that the schools would get about $470,000 in TIF revenue annually. The NCA revenue would be about $136,000 for a total of a little over $600,000 a year. And over the, if this all happens at once, for this simple example, over 20 years, that would be about $12 billion instead of the $3,000 that would happen if.
Now, I have a question on this.
Yes.
Are your figures taking into consideration all the properties? So the ones in Big Walnut too, or are these just the Olentangie properties?
These are just the Olentangie properties, yes. Yeah, everything west of 71.
Right.
Right. I think, yeah, that's all that we would like to present. We'd happy to be, we'd happy to answer any questions if there are any.
If you could go back one slide.
Uh, yes.
How did you determine the, how'd you settle on these mil rates?
Were apartments kind of be the biggest tax burden, followed by the auto dealer, townhomes, then office?
Pat, why don't you go back? Because you explained more, the NCA is more than, the total NCA is 10 mils total?
Right. So.
Or what a new community authority, a new community authority can assess additional millage on parcels.
Correct. So.
Almost like an HOA fee.
Right.
Right?
Yeah. So what we've done is we've allocated it to where the total millage that the NCA will assess on apartments is 15 mils on both sides, okay? On the Big Walnut side as well as the Olentangie side. Unfortunately, Olentangie's tax base is higher than Big Walnut's tax base. So what we've had to do is we've allocated the west side to be an additional 10 mils for any type of commercial property. And then on the Big Walnut side, it's 20 mils. And it brings them up even, okay? Multifamily, it's 15 on both sides. So what we've done is we've impacted the multifamily developer to basically offset the cost of being a multifamily developer, and then shared that portion with the Olentangie schools, no differently than what we've done with, what we've done with the auto dealer. The one thing that's in this that really, in addition, is there's a half percent sales tax. That is basically goes all to the NCA on both sides. If you go to the Tanger Allen Mall today, there's usually a half a percent service charge that they basically, and that money is going towards the interchange. They have to contribute $10 million to the new interchange, as well as us as developer have to develop 10 million. So those millages that you see in that slide that are separated are in our petition. And one of the reasons why we're here is basically so we can put in our petition that that area on the west side in the Olentangie School District is able to provide, we can get a 20/75% TIF, but from going forward, this is what the Olentangie School District will receive of any NCA charges, basically moving forward.
And those NCA charges or that millage doesn't necessarily fall off even if the TIF has passed its 20 years, correct?
Correct.
So they stay in place?
We have a lot of, and we do have a lot of areas of district that are part of NCA's, like the Kinseal Golf Village area is an NCA. Glenn Ross has an NCA to fund Glenn Parkway and so on. And the other, you know, as Pat said, the 10, 15 mils or whatever, the additional millage from those is going to be used to fund the infrastructure for the roadways. And then Evans Farm has a, I think it's a 10 mil NCA.
I just wanted to add on this, you know, again, the apartments are the only thing that has the potential to bring any additional child into the school district.
Right.
And that's obviously why that's.
Well, what portion of the red, single family, though?
Well, that is going to pay you, and there's not going to be any TIF on that.
Right.
So all single-family homes are excluded from this, but the millage will be assessed to that house and still come.
If by chance there are some of it.
It's just a, you know, again, it's bringing new development, you know, to the area. There was another piece I stood up here and I wanted to tell you, and I lost my thought. But obviously, the apartments piece, I mean, I think statistics show that that's not going to bring additional children, but it's going to, you know, if it brings one, it's an additional piece.
400 apartments at our current yield is 32 kids.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The next discussion item is the second reading of the five-year forecast. Ms. Hatfield?
Oh, I think so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So the second reading of the forecast, I promise, will be much more expedient than the first reading. We do not have, as previously stated, we do not have any changes to the forecast from the presentation that we did at the last board meeting. So I just want to touch base with you and make sure that we talk about where we were in October to look at our revenues versus expenditures, unreserved balance, and days cash on hand. In October of 2018, these were the line items and the amounts that were in the five-year forecast for revenue versus expenditures, unreserved cash balance, and days cash on hand. We were looking at, in fiscal 2019, spending more than we were bringing in, and by the end of the five-year forecast, being in the negative for days cash on hand. In informal policy, we like to have at least two months' cash balance at the end of the fiscal year in order to carry forward with our operations. So looking at this, we were right around that area in 2021. And then as we look ahead to the May five-year forecast, same statistics for you, or same line items to look at from the May forecast filing, we can see that we have a pretty good improvement. With the $8 million that we had in revenue exceeding our expectations and in the savings that we had with our insurance, we were able to improve our revenue versus expenditures in fiscal year 2019 to the positive 1.5 million. And that carries forward through the forecast, showing that we are at a negative 29 days by the end of fiscal year 23. So looking at days cash balance and thinking ahead in terms of operating dollars and where we would need to be, in fiscal year 2021, we do have that two-month cash reserve. However, as we looked at our enrollment projections, we know that in fiscal '21, '22, we are going to be needing another elementary space. So in taking a look at that projection, we're probably still looking at fiscal, the spring of fiscal 2020. But with the positive change that we've had, it just means that we will be able to come to the community with potentially a reduced millage rate than we would have based on the statistics from the October forecast. At this point, without any changes in state funding, October, we were looking at roughly a 7.9 mil. Now we're at a 6.9 mil without any changes in funding. The other statistic that we know is as we move forward, things change almost immediately as soon as we hit print on our five-year forecast. So we have an opportunity to improve not only our expenditures, but our revenue pieces, and we'll continue to monitor the state budget. We do have an opportunity to testify again before the Senate next Wednesday. And we are actually going, Mr. Rafe and I are going with three other districts. We are partnering with Licking Heights, with Whitehall, and with Pickerington to talk about the similarity of the impact that the caps have on the current funding formula for schools and why the fair school funding plan is a good plan for the state of Ohio. So we'll continue to reach out to our legislators and have those conversations and hopefully be able to move the needle even better for our community and for the state in general with fair funding for schools.
A subgroup, are you addressing just the committee at the Senate? Are you addressing?
It's the Senate Finance Committee. And they will be taking testimony from school districts on Wednesday. So it will be lots of schools coming in. I'm sure we'll hear both sides of the argument as we have before, and that those who are on guarantees are really holding on to that funding. They don't want to lose funding, whether that guarantee is because they were told that, you know, their funding wouldn't be reduced, whether they lose ADM or not, or enrollment or not. You know, our stance is that we've always wanted to talk about fair funding. We want the funding to be where the students go, and we want the opportunity to have the same base as chartered non-public schools get, which is roughly $1,300. Right now, we're at about $600. Right now, we're at about $600.
What's your intent to do this testifying? Because this, I don't want to dissuade you from testifying, but we testify, we testify. We bend the knee, we buy dinner that's way overpriced, and we get to the same place. So at some point, I know you guys want to keep talking about it, but at some point, is your time more valuable not standing in front of a bunch of bobos that aren't going to do anything about it? Let's just be direct about it. I mean, that's, because frankly, it's just, I mean, I appreciate the fact you're going to do it. I mean, you're more patient than I have. But it's just, it's an ongoing pouring out of energy and time and effort for a group of people that have for 20-plus years ignored the state Supreme Court. So what's the intent? What's the outcome? What do you hope to achieve by that?
You know, the outcome that I think, that I hope to achieve in this segment of testimony is to show that we are uniting with other districts in central Ohio, that it's not just about those rural communities or the southern communities who are crying out for it, but we're crying out as well. You're capping us and we can't keep up with our students, and you're asking us to pass another four or five mils of taxes because you don't want to fund, quote unquote, "a rich district." It's just not fair. You know, are we beating a dead horse? Maybe. But I think that we owe it to our community to at least give it an effort. If it, you know, if it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, but we're trying our best to make sure that we can put any effort forward to help move the needle.
If you have resolve, I support your resolve 100%. At some point, though, I think there has to be a different strategic approach to finding a place where the armor's thinnest, where we can poke it in a little bit farther and make, and draw some, get somebody to sit up a little bit higher in their chair and make a decision that's different than what's been happening year after year after year. And then when Julie reported last time that, you know, we're two to four budget cycles out potentially again for anything to happen.
Right.
I mean, your testimony, will your testimony today affect and change that down to just two? I mean, again, I'm not, I'm all for you, kid. I'm doing it. I just, I just, I want to make sure that what we're doing is makes sense.
I think you have to have continuity of your message. That's not just a two-year cycle. That could be a 20-year cycle. In fact, it's been a 20-year cycle. And I think you just have to keep doing it. You just have to keep, in that public setting, is to have the continuing message that is always the same message. And then, yes, you can do the other strategic avenues on different tracks at the same time. It's a multi-level approach.
But I also think that the residents of this district need to realize that the people that they're voting for to send to the State House are of no help to us.
I agree with that, too.
I mean, they could say that they're, the one person who has championed for us has a sliver of our district, and that's Representative Carfania.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, and I don't know if you all got the piece of mail at the House yesterday from Chris, Mr. Jordan, Senator Jordan saying, let's support his courageousness now on the next endeavor that he's on.
No.
I mean, it was, it was just a great piece of courage.
But I agree with Emily. I agree with Emily. We owe it to our residents to keep trying. And unfortunately, I mean, I had members over there for seven hours yesterday, or today, testifying on the business income interest deduction to preserve that, which is a whole nother story, but that's the system. That's what you have to do.
And I think it's important that we continue to demonstrate we exhaust all options.
Right. Exactly. I mean, I ran into, yesterday when we were at the State House listening to the keynote saying Rick Carfania had a board member from New Albany, and he said, at least you guys are trying, because they're not doing anything.
Arlington, same way.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And while that's frustrating, you know, I'm a little more encouraged this time that we have an opportunity to go with other districts.
I think it's great. Those districts are, I mean, Whitehall's high poverty, Licking Heights is growing, Pickerington had been growing, but it's not growing as fast as it is now. It's districts we haven't partnered with before, and I think that's great. And I think it's interesting to take, hopefully, that'll resonate, that if you take a look at those different socioeconomic backgrounds and their difference in numbers of ADM, that it impacts all of us by caps in the same way. I mean, they like to tell that the caps are only hurting those rich people, but really it's not. It's applying to all of those districts and hurting us all severely. So hopefully, this approach to the message and showing that example will get a little further. You know, at the end of the day, I can't promise that it'll be the last needle that pushes them over the edge, but we'll give it all we got and keep going with it from there. So with our risk assessment, of course, we talk about our insurance enrollment and premium rates. We discussed that last time. We also discussed student enrollment. Of course, that leads to additional staffing and additional facility needs, which leads us to ballot items. And then again, the impact of the state budget could help us stretch that levy cycle and reduce our next ask. Again, even fully funded, it would not keep us off the ballot in perpetuity, but it would help us be fairly funded and stretch that levy cycle so we're not in a three- to four-year cycle continuously. So just as a reminder to those who may watch the video, I hope, or others in the audience who left, that we have several opportunities, of course, to get involved. The OLSD Advocacy Committee, and then there are links to the state budgets for updates and the Fair School Funding Plan on the treasures page of the website to help people get directed to information if they want to get more involved and help take a stand in this school funding. And with that, I'll take any questions. There was a video that was released last week, late last week. Representative Patterson was, did a video saying, "It's not dead. Cut Patterson is not dead." And so apparently, they're going to introduce Cut Patterson as a standalone bill next week in hopes that it would get rolled into the budget during conference committee. So we'll see. So we'll see. Again, maybe we're the sword that pushes it out.
In my conversations with, is that it's, hopefully, even if it passes as a standalone bill, it'll give it more legs, maybe at a mid-biennium review or for the next biennium.
So to be continued, as always.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Haffield.
Thank you.
All right. Our next discussion item is the student handbooks and student fees. Dr. Fettig.
Good evening. I don't have a PowerPoint at all, but I'm presenting the handbooks and fees. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review those. The student handbooks have been thoroughly revised this year to try to cut down on length without cutting down on content and make a little more sense out of the flow of the handbooks. But they still cover all of the same, we haven't changed much of the content. You know, student code of conduct, grade policies, dress code is all still covered in the handbook. The only major content change has to do with vaping, where we've increased the penalty for vaping, wrapped it into the non-smoking alcohol, tobacco, and drug policy that increased the, brought vaping use to, similar to those first offenses as well. Also then, on the fee side, there's not a lot of major changes other than the, you might have noticed some advanced placement course changes. There's a major revision going on at the college, the national level about AP courses. So we're just keeping up with those. Any questions?
That's good.
Are we breaking even on our fees with what they're supposed to be for? I mean.
Well, I mean, we collect fees, right? But at one time, one point, we talked about making sure that we were collecting enough so we weren't going upside down on.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So we're still good budget-wise.
Did you say we're good now?
Fee collection versus.
I would say we're definitely in the black with the fee collections.
Yeah, no, we do. We can't go too high, but just want to make sure we're within our comfort range.
When this is adopted, I know this is the first reading, but can we somehow point out the changes to the, to the handbooks regarding vaping? Like send out, just don't send out the book, the handbook. Say, yeah, say.
A cover memo of kind of, here's what's changed.
Yeah.
That is part of our overall communication from the building administrators, middle school, high school.
Yeah.
As part of highlighting this. We also want to build upon the success of the Olentangie High School DECA team.
Yes.
Who is in the forefront, I don't know if you were aware, and winning first place at national competition.
Did they really?
So a lot of their information, we want to start to revisit. One of the recommendations is what we talked about then was increasing the consequences. And I can assure you, it will be communicated had nauseam.
Good.
Well, we also, though, to that end, we do have to, we should, most of the questions we get about vaping come from elementary parents. So we do, we will message it as a district.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're scared to death. They think that, they walk into the bathroom and everybody's handing them out. Just put it on the bubble. I'm sure that it'll get all the attention that it needs.
And Julie, you had said first reading, but this is, we are approving it tonight as well.
I thought we had to do two.
I think we used to, and we changed that a year or two ago.
So how long will it be? I mean, it was, what, 285? What, how many, roll it skinny down to?
Just give that to Trixie.
248. 248.
That's, 248 is all three of them combined. So the high school one specifically is about 72, it looks like, pages.
Do we still print it and make them sign it, or do they?
The signature is all electronic now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fettig. Next agenda item, the athletic handbook updates. Randy Wright, Chief of Administrative Services.
And this is even more brief. We have one inconsequential change in semantics. We rebuilt the citizenship policy into expectations for athletes, conduct of athletes and citizenship. And we moved what was formerly a citizenship policy into item number three, and this is on page nine of the athletic handbook. So basically, we're saying the conduct of an athlete is closely observed in the classroom, on the field, and we said in the community. And we added language that our community expectations are in effect just as all parts are 12 months of the year. So those are the two significant changes we made to our athletic handbook this year.
Is that mostly in reference to social media activity?
Absolutely is. Mm-hmm. Anything else?
Yes, we're going to continue to try to parent them 24/7, 3/65, everywhere they are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Okay, I'd like to present Board Action Items A through E, which would be contractual increases for non-union classified, non-union food service. Administrator Superintendent Treasure.
I'll move to accept. If you were done.
Any discussion?
Mr. Barts, for you the second?
No.
Mindy is. Okay.
Mrs. Patrick, and she's highly offended by that. Just saying, our voices are so similar.
So similar. All right. One faux pas, here we go.
Let's call the roll.
It's 10 years, come on.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
I'm never going to live that down, am I?
It's already forgotten.
Please, Treasure Action Items. It's got to be the end of the year.
Yes, please, I would like to present Treasure Action Items A through G for approval, please.
So moved.
Second.
All right, please call the roll.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Rafe, please present Superintendent Action Items.
Yes, sir. I would first, before I do, well, I'm going to present Superintendent Action Items A through K, but I want to highlight on Exhibit C5, we have with us tonight Alexandria Nicolay, who will be a new guidance counselor at Berlin High School.
Hi.
Welcome.
Your spinner continues to ask his new staff to come to the board meetings, even, where are you coming from, Alexandria?
From Alabot.
And your current high school counselor?
Yes.
All right. Welcome. So with that, Superintendent Action Items A through K.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Meyer, I believe we have a Chief Operations Officer.
Operations Officer, Action Item 14A, approval of Catherine Rafe as an extended school year instructor at Freedom Trail Elementary School.
So moved.
Second.
That was Dave.
She may be coming with us later on, so it'd be nice.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And the only discussion, again, is Mr. Rafe indicated June 13th is our next board meeting here. With that, please call the roll, Ms. Haffield.
Mrs. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
And Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Thank you.